The Commission, tonight is Monday, November the 28th, hours 5:30. I call us to order and ask that we be led in a moment of prayer by Commissioner Kevin Cardle. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. Father of all, we come to you tonight grateful for the opportunity to gather as neighbors and discuss the business of the city. We would ask particularly tonight that you be with the families of those who had loved ones who were victims of the recent shootings that have proliferated recently. We would ask here that you grant us peace and that we conduct ourselves in a way that's pleasing to you. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I'm going to ask that our guests tonight, who are the Boil County Soccer Team, come forward. Take your time. Come forward, not all at once. Come on up here. We're getting the crowd around up here. Hands cold, sorry about that. How you doing? All right, there's the flag. Now, flag's right there. You lead off.
I am allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Free.
I don't want.
There it is.
They got in the right room.
I swear even just like you did it. Not like their mom.
I'm in here to take a place.
Babies.
I got babies.
I don't know the puzzle.
Those are soccer players, right? Both of you soccer players.
Soccer players.
Soccer players.
You are.
Kansas City goes to nothing.
I saw the kid in Sunday for nothing.
Take your back, Ray.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Gives me hope.
Jim, you did get two back, right? Lay it on the D, Ray.
The agenda's been out since Friday. I assume it meets with your all's approval. I've not heard anything to the contrary, so we will move right along. We're going to the section we call Hear the Public. This is the public's opportunity to take three minutes at the podium and address the commission on any item that's on tonight's agenda. We will do likewise later on in the agenda to do on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So, do I have anybody that wants to take three minutes at the microphone?
Ms. Denny?
Wait a minute now, where they going?
Where? Ms. Denny?
Hold on. No, 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 we want them back.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we got to highlight them a little bit better.
Apparently y'all didn't need to find Grant.
She's taking them out of here, wouldn't she?
Is the coach out there?
I don't know. I don't know which person is the coach.
Tell on you. Hey, guys, you're going to earn your way tonight. So, does anyone wants to address the commission on any item that is on tonight's agenda? Going once, going twice, moving right along. Now, gentlemen and lady, we have with us tonight the Boil County Boy Soccer. David Ritchie is the coach, Kyle Settle is the assistant coach, and behind all of these young men's, there's a lot of moms that did some washing and all of that kind of thing.
They're dead.
So, this is the 45th District champs, they're the 12th Region champs, they're the 2A Section 5 champs, they're the 2A semifinals, they're the Kentucky High School Athletic Association State Elite Eight, school record 13 shutouts, nice, Constitution Cup winners, and four All-State players, Tristan Compton, Dennis Leans, Jack Little, and Matthew Britt. Fantastic gentlemen, you to be committed. So, come on down front, right here. There you go again, that's right. You're going to get it right this time. We'll start down here at the end, introduce yourself. Name, rank, serial number.
Allen Wireman.
Who's your mom and dad?
Anthony Wireman and Amanda Wood.
There you go.
Jackson Poole and Sherri Merrick.
Andrew Carr and Carla Carr and Ryan Carr.
McLean Denny, Parrish Denny and Lisa Denny.
Bo Little and Brian Little and Rami Little.
Micah Brown, Nicole Brown and Aaron Brown.
John Cooley, Paul and Tina Cooley.
What years in school? Don't tell me you're all seniors.
We're all sophomores.
One senior?
Yeah, I'm a weird one.
So, you're booking out.
No, junior.
Good deal. Everybody else is coming back for soccer this next year?
No, I'm a junior.
You coming back? So, we can expect the same results, right?
Oh.
Huh? How are grades? Grades good?
Yeah.
Okay. Who do we have with us in the audience that's with you guys?
Raise your hands.
And you are moms?
I'm a mom.
Got it?
I'm my kid's mom.
There you go. Well, you should thank your mom, right? I love you. Thank you for sharing them with us, fine young men, and we appreciate being here and being part of everything. Now, gentlemen, the evening is yours.
He told Ms. Denny to leave the room.
Commission, Chair will accept approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, that being November the 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Cardle, thank you. Discussion, seeing none, Chair called question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item two is a reappointment at the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I ask that you consider the reappointment of Juan Janet Hamner as a longstanding member of that organization who comes with great support from our CVB Executive Director.
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. We're in discussion.
I just don't think I can vote for her. I'm kidding.
You have to write.
Kidding.
Any further questions, comments, seeing none, Chair called question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. We have a Christmas Parade update, and I'm going to ask our liaison professional, Melanie Crawford, to do the introductions, please.
I will talk long because they've done all the work, but we do have the Christmas Parade planned for Saturday, December 10th at 6:00 PM. There's a number of other events going on in town. KSD is doing tours of Jacob's Hall, the Art Center is doing their Holiday Market and Santa's Art Shop for Kids. And then, starting at 4:00 PM outside of City Hall, we are going to be serving hot chocolate and cookies, and you can come hang out with a variety of characters. Our lineup is going to start on College Street at 4:00 PM, and everybody should be in line by 5:15. Parade starts rolling at 6:00, and they're going to report on our participants and our judges and some of the other exciting things happening that evening. So, this is Jamie Votal. She has been the official leader of the Christmas Parade Committee, and Tanya Darnell is organizing our volunteers.
Excellent.
Hello.
Good evening.
So, I am Jamie Votal. I am a volunteer who ended up as the chairwoman just by coming to a meeting.
It happened that way.
That'll teach you.
It happened that way.
So, we do have what we think is going to be very close to a record-setting amount of participation for the parade. We've had a really great outcome. We have so far 80 participants, 26 of them are floats that we do think will be fantastic. And so, we are expecting a great turnout. Other than that, we are, and I'll let Tanya speak to this, but we are in need of volunteers. So, we are expecting a very large turnout, both in spectators and then, like I said, a lot of participants. So, just wanted to get that out there, to ask for folks to help volunteer line the streets.
Who would they need to contact to volunteer?
They can contact me. The easiest way would be to go on Facebook, on our committee page, there's a link.
Okay.
That you can get on there, sign up, put your email address, and then, we're going to have a volunteer meeting coming up the week of.
Yeah, next Tuesday on this December 6th.
Yes. And although we have a ton of participants, we don't have a ton of volunteers at this point, so if any of you all, or you know anybody that would like to, I think our concern this year, of course, with having as many participants as we have, and we're expecting a large crowd, is with the sidewalks, the construction that's going on, and we're going to have food trucks on both sides of the parade. So, I think we're going to probably need more volunteers than we've had at previous parades. Thank goodness we've had Janet and Carol to kind of give us the feedback, guide us on that, because right now, we have about 20 that we're lining up along the streets, but if we could, we would also like a little bit of police presence or a little bit of manpower, because it's just, it's just a little unnerving with the, and I know a lot of it's going to hopefully be done by then, but to have the kids, the crowd, the participants, there's going to be a lot going on with the construction there. So, if we could request that, that would be wonderful.
I think it's a fair request, don't you, City Manager?
Sure do. We'll talk about it with the chief and get organized.
Okay.
And we want to thank you for all the support. I know we're going to have things lined up, and you all have supported, so we wanted to thank you for that. Thank you.
Well, we thank you.
I do have a question. I know two of us had, like, signed up online as volunteers, but nobody's heard back. Like, I volunteered one or two days and never got an email or heard back.
I sent emails, I sent two emails saying that we would have an update and then a meeting. So, you didn't receive that. Okay, well, I'll follow up and see what the glitch is, but yeah. Sorry about that. But we, yeah, we've tried to respond, and we're going to announce that meeting to let everybody know. And we had originally said we would need people that Friday night, but it doesn't look like we're going to need Friday night setup and all that, so.
Okay, well, that's good. Then we'll all be there Saturday.
Yeah.
It'll be a good day. Thank you, everybody's so excited, and thank you for all the hard work and reaching out to people, so.
Tremendous, tremendous on your part. Thank you.
Thanks. We appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Let us know anything else you need, okay? With that, we'll move right into our City Manager Report. Mr. Coffey.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. December 7th, we'll go over important dates real quick. December 7th, we're having a special call Parks meeting that morning. December 19th is a special call commission meeting. The meeting on the 12th is canceled. We just want to remind everyone of that. We talked about December 1st and, of course, December 10th, Christmas Parade. Christmas slowdown on the Streetscape project is, should be hopefully visible, that you'll see fewer workers out there over the next few weeks as we try to impact businesses during this shopping season to a smaller degree. In terms of future agenda items, not much has changed there. We're trying to work through some of these, which are longer-term items. One of the things we would like to point out is the staff education. We'd like to acknowledge Marshall Carrier. He was recognized as being a graduate of the Kentucky Rural Water Utility Management Institute, and I would like to just suggest that all of the department heads do that, all the staff do that, and a lot of times, that goes unseen, but we would like to just communicate outwardly that all staff does that. I'm trying to stay on the leading edge. Marshall and I attended a class for rate setting through the AWWA in Cincinnati a couple weeks ago, and that is just an ongoing thing that we work on as staff, and I just want to make sure we took a moment with him, made me pause and make sure I communicated that outwardly. But that's really all I have for tonight, unless you all have some.
I don't have anything. I just want to say thanks again for the list of, that you shared, what is the written report? It's always very helpful.
Was it in our notes? I didn't, I don't see it. Oh, you know what? It just downloaded finally. Okay, thank you.
Send it to everybody but you. Took a lot of effort to do that.
Now, it's three pages. Okay, okay. Well, I do like these, because it helps me take notes and put things on my calendar and remember, so thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Thanks, sir. As I promised, we'll move right into the section called Hear the Public. This is the public's opportunity to take three minutes at the podium on any item that's on your mind, does not have to be on tonight's agenda. Going once, going twice?
Turkey did them in.
Ms. Calhoun, you not going to give us anything? Wow, there you go. We're doing good, ladies and gentlemen, we're doing good. Got Ms. Calhoun happy, that's good. Move right into item five. Got to keep Ms. Calhoun happy now.
Josh has done a good job.
Payment of the bills, Chair will entertain a motion for the payment of the bills as presented.
You skipped Commissioner Callman.
I don't want to hear from them. No, I'm sorry. You're right, I did. Who wants to say something?
I have nothing to say.
Go ahead.
I love the sleighs.
Yeah.
I've not found 12 yet. People do need to know, though, that they're allowed to get on them, because a lot of people don't know that, so.
And I think, I think they should be decorated a little bit by the end of the week, we hope.
Okay. I also really like the activity post in the water bill, so I don't know if you did that, or our community liaison, but.
Melanie, put that together.
Not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before that, Brian Huttsley and Jenny was involved, and Jason Cullen, and I'm missing one. Myself.
You.
Anyway, we met for about an hour and reviewed about 15 resumes for the new Development Corporation Executive Director position. We think we've got three standouts, maybe a fourth coming, but I'm very pleased to say we've got, we've got some good opportunities ahead of us there. Just share that as information.
Yeah. I'd like to make a comment, too. I've debated whether I should say anything, but when your name's used, sometimes you do. I'm very honored to have, you know, been elected again, and I was disheartened a bit this campaign season that our nonpartisan City Commission was very politicized. For me personally, I was not only offended personally, but I think it's inappropriate for the commission, and I just wanted to say that. It's divisive. There's no divides, there's no sides, we're all on the same team for Danville, and I hope moving forward, that can be lessened or avoided. I definitely want no part of that. Does anybody else want to add?
I want to thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah.
This body, this body produces results, because we don't get into that DNR stuff, and it would be, it would be, it would be far too large for me to say it, but I'm going to say it anyway. I think at all levels of government, we ought to get away from the DNR. Just get the job done.
Yeah, no sides, no politics, just all about Danville, and that's it.
You're there to represent the people who put you there. Just get the job done. Thanks for bringing that up. Anything else? We'll go right into the payment of the bills. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the payment of the bills as presented.
I'll have to offer that motion, Mr. Mayor.
And the amount of $216,0996.99. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Holland. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item six is the second reading of ordinance number 2003. This is the amendment to the occupational ordinance. Chair will entertain a motion for the second reading of that ordinance. Madam Clerk, you want to read that just for everybody's benefit?
This is the second reading of ordinance number 2003, an ordinance amending City of Danville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 16, Taxation, Article 2, Occupational Licenses, to change the department where an application for a license is applied for and obtained.
Offer motion to approve second reading?
I'll second for a quick question as well.
Thank you, sir, we are in questions.
Earl, do you want to, or somebody just kind of refresh everybody on what exactly?
I'll handle that. That is, we are just strictly, the ordinance specified who specifically issued business license for the city. It used to be under Mrs. Lester's department, which she is the Director of Codes and Financial Enforcement. And the Finance Department officially issues those now. So it's just correcting the ordinance or rewording the ordinance to reflect who currently issues business license. That's the, that's the change in it so that it's accurate.
Okay. Do they go to the water window now?
They don't. We have, some people forget, we do have the three water windows, but we have a fourth window that is toward the side entrance door. I believe this signs, there is a small brown sign at the top that says business license. I think it also says code enforcement and maybe parking. But there is a fourth window that the city uses for all of our financial occupational items.
Any further questions or comments?
Call for the question, please.
Questions have been called. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Item seven is the second reading of ordinance number 2004. This is the transient tax ordinance. Ms. Compton, you want to address that? If it has your name next to it?
Yes, I can do that as well. So this, if you remember, we have updated the transient tax ordinance, which is a tax on motels, hotel stays, things like that. The ordinance was updated so that online, I guess retailers would be a good word, like Airbnb or Booking.com, things of those sectors are required to collect the transient tax that we already have in place, which goes to fund the Danville Boyle County Tourist Commission. The city doesn't collect this tax. The city doesn't receive any of this money to be passed on. The ordinance needs to be updated so that they can collect those monies.
Do I hear a motion for the second reading of the ordinance?
I'll move to approve the second reading of ordinance 2004.
Thank you, Commissioner Holland, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cottle, thank you. Have a question, maybe to our CVB Director. How successfully are you able to collect these funds from BMBs particularly?
At the moment, we're, we have a difficult time just because there's no information on those platforms about who the owners are, contact information. So it's a battle across the state for us to identify, collect those. This legislation that was passed will require Airbnb, VRBO to collect the tax at the time they rent online. So they will collect that money and remit it to us. So we won't have to necessarily know who they all are, but we'll get a true measure of how much is actually owed to us by.
Yeah, and the state, the state took action because that's not just a Boyle County Danville issue. I mean, that's a system-wide issue. And it's only increasing as more and more people use Hotels.com. Not that it's an advertisement for them, because there's others, but. Right.
Great.
Okay, that's my question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments, seeing none, chair will call the question, all in favor of the? Nope, sorry. Madam Clerk?
This is the second reading of ordinance number 2004, an ordinance amending City of Danville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 16, Taxation, Article 4, Transient Tax, to close the collection gap that previously omitted online travel companies. Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Item eight is Resolution Number 2022-11-28-01. This is a small business relief Streetscape project. Once again, Ms. Compton, floor is yours.
Yes, so I won't claim credit for this project. This was, you know, thought of by Earl and Melanie. They, I just kind of did some legwork to help them out on the funding side. So what we would like to do is provide some of the small businesses on Main Street and directly adjacent that have been impacted by our Streetscape project with a small grant to help essentially with their potential revenue losses that they have faced due to our project. So we have designed an application and a specified area that is impacted directly by the program. And small businesses, locally owned private small businesses, things like financial institutions, wouldn't be eligible, would be eligible to, to apply for this grant program and be granted a potential, up to $10,000 in relief. That would be impacted based on where their location is and potentially how much revenue loss they've sustained during the period. I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sure I don't miss anything. So we have capped it at around $225,000. We've kind of tried to make a good estimate of how many businesses it would face. Not all businesses would be eligible for the $10,000 based on the type of services they provide, like retail, retail and dining spaces directly on Main Street, we believe would be impacted more than a, you know, retail and dining space that is off of Main Street but still in the nearby area. So applicants would be required to submit the, their documentation by the end of July. We're hoping to get quite a bit before, I'm sorry, January, not July. July 31st. We're hoping to get quite a few before the end of the year. And those would be reviewed by city staff, myself and Earl and before approval. And those would be issued out from the city.
Any questions?
I'm sure there's quite a few.
And where's, where's the funding from?
So the funding, yeah, I was going to say, there's two parts to this. So our funding part, and in your packet, you have a memo as the very last couple of pages, which covers this in more detail. So ideally, what we would like to do, the grant would come from our general fund. But we did not budget for that, so that means we do have to find money in our, in our budget for that. So what we would like to do is allocate $225,000 of ARPA money, not to fund this program, but to fund general services that are covered by ARPA. That would include things like police salaries, services that the city provides on a ongoing basis, and capital projects that are allowed for ARPA funding. It's just a, if, a, this program wouldn't qualify for ARPA funding, so we would qualify our own projects internal that we are already doing anyway for that. And additionally, even if it did, you would probably not want to do it because that makes those recipients a sub-recipient for grant funding, which involves a lot of monitoring that, it's just frankly, a lot of extra work that for, a lot of extra compliance that we could get potentially in trouble for. So we would like to use ARPA money for general services, government services. Common examples, I included some common examples in your packet. Construction, road building and maintenance, other infrastructure, government administration of staff, environmental remediation, police fire and other public safety services. So essentially, this would allow us to free up general fund money that we had previously budgeted elsewhere.
That's brilliant, so it's kind of full circle.
I won't take full credit for that either.
Without taxpayer dollars, so, okay, thank you.
Yes.
That's, that's great, okay.
Yeah, and so this is the first time we've done a program like this. We do think, given the timing of this particular Streetscape project, it's definitely warranted to consider. And certainly, which is why we concluded that the recommendation to the full board is worthy of staff to do that. We offered as a proposal, we think it's the right thing to do, given the timing of construction being so close to Christmas and this is for a lot of folks, their, their peak season. And, and other communities have done a similar grant program to mitigate impacts. It depends on to the degree of the impact. So for example, on Main Street, it was not as, as noticeable, or I'm sorry, on Main Street, on between 5th and 4th on, along Main, it wasn't as noticeable directly for the, the, all the retail establishments. But, so, so we, we felt like that this delineation being the core, core district of downtown really meant it impacted everything. And so, which is why we tried to capture the primary area, then, then the off-Main Street retail dining is also impacted and that captures your businesses that could have been impacted by previous Streetscape projects and brings them back into, to hopefully gives them some consideration. Hope that makes sense. And it's a lot of words, but it's a fairly simple program.
Great. Are the businesses going to be contacted, I guess, that are affected? Great, thank you.
We will have to market to them, yes.
Okay.
We will make sure that, that the program's known and available.
So the chair needs a motion and a second for the resolution.
I'll move to approve Resolution 2022-11-2801.
Thank you, ma'am, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion?
I was just going to say, you know, the downtown merchants have been very patient, in my opinion. And, but in spite of our best efforts, and those are the contractors who I think has been very good as well, it would be hard to believe that they're not being impacted by what's going on. So I think it's a great idea, even if it did come from you.
Well, their existence downtown is a benefit to the overall community. And, and so, as well as the project. So it's, it's a project expense ultimately.
Good deal.
Seeing no further comments or questions, chair will call the question, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item nine is.
Before we move on, I just want to tell staff, thanks for taking the time to explain this to us individually in advance of this meeting. It really resolved a lot of, a lot of concerns. We appreciate the effort last week.
Item nine is with respect to 315 Baughman Properties. Mr. Morgan, you want to lead the way on that?
Yes, there's a, there's a vacant lot on the corner of Baughman and Aspen that has, you know, it's, I think it's a property that the city's been maintaining for a while and en filing liens on it. I think we demolished the building, Bridget, she's taking it ahead, yes. We currently have, the last, the last update that Bridget gave, there was a total of $17,417.27 of liens the city currently has on it. And through the process of the, the development that's occurring next door on Baughman and the Baughman Avenue sidewalk meeting that we had, that has come to light a lot of stormwater issues we have down there. And they're not, I think the new development is a concern that we're keeping an eye on as it gets, as it moves along. But also, the, the curb and gutter that was installed on Baughman 30 years ago at this point, along with Palmer Court across the street from there, it's very, very close to that, has created, all of that drainage comes together right at this lot. So I kind of identified it as a real opportunity for us to do some stormwater infrastructure there to prevent some flooding downstream. It's also an area that's been identified as needing parks. We all kind of know that area needs more parks, you know, as part of our Parks Master Plan, pointing that out. So I reached out to Stephen Dexter to see if there was something that, you know, what is the process for the city potentially acquiring this property? So I'm going to kind of turn it over to him now to let him explain what that process would look like.
So at this point, we think it's feasible, if you're in agreement, to initiate foreclosure proceedings that would foreclose the city's roughly $18,000 worth of liens and seek not only recoupment, but further authorization to acquire the property through the foreclosure process. Now, participation in the foreclosure by initiation doesn't guarantee that the city can own it, but it does give you a leg up at the sale to hopefully acquire it. And so after you would initiate us to proceed, we would file a lawsuit, seek collection by judgment of the city's liens, and then ask that it be sold by the master commissioner, at which time we would further come back to you and get your approval to bid up to a certain dollar amount that we could acquire it by, using our judgment amount as a credit, of course, at that auction, and then hopefully acquire it for city services. Again, there's no guarantee. The city could be outbid. There could be also, the mortgage holder on the property could simply collect its existing balance, if any, on the property. However, we've discussed strategically, if we can acquire property that's to some advantage to the city and recoup the lien at the same time, then this one seems to be a good one to go after.
Do I hear a motion for the resolution?
And we don't actually have a resolution. But what we would, what would be technically seek is just a motion to approve the filing of a litigation action to collect the, enforce, or enforce the collectment of the city's liens on 315 Baughman Avenue.
You want that now?
Yes, sir.
I move.
Motion's made by Mr. Atkins, second.
Second.
Mr. Holland, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
And Mayor, if I may, this is typically a subject that we would be entitled to speak about in executive session. But due to the investment of community dollars and buying potentially for a new community park and the investment of some stormwater improvements, we felt that it was best to have this dialogue in public in an open manner to, again, buy, have community input and buy into the process at an early stage, earlier than we would typically divulge in a normal litigation position. But I thought it was proper to note the deviation in our, our current normal practice.
Okay, item 10 is Resolution Number 2022-11-28-02. This is for, asking for approval of a design fee for the Police Department.
Yes, we have previously been discussing some possible improvements to the Police Department side of City Hall. Some renovations to update it after, you know, 13 years of use is starting to show a little bit of age. So we brought in Bran Sider Carroll, who was the original designer of this, of this building, to come walk through it and discuss it with the Police Department, what they, their vision for the future was, just so we can, we can kind of create a long-term home for them that, that meets their current needs. Those needs change a lot with personnel and with just with how the, the industry changes. So they walked through it with us. They came back with a scope and fee that are included in your packet to do kind of an initial, initial design of $9,500. And we were asking approval to move forward with them.
Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval of Resolution Number 2022-11-2802.
Thank you, Mr. Cottle, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Holland, thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Seeing none, chair will call a question, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item 11 is Resolution Number 2022-11-28-03. This is with respect to the cemetery expansion plat. Mr. Morgan, continue, sir.
Yes, in your packet, you have a, a copy of the plat for the, the new section of Bellevue Cemetery on North, North 1st Street. It is in, it's got, there are 28 sections, 28. It is in, it's got, there are 28 sections, 28 lots. Two of those lots are technically what we consider half lots. There'll be six graves instead of 12. So that, that comes to a total of, I believe it's 324 graves. And those would just extend back to the roadway in the back by the high school parking lot. We have the potential to do more graves on the other side of that road in the future. We're keeping an eye on the drainage right now in that area just to see how it responds to the changes we've made, to see if we need to do any drainage work back there before we open those up for sale. But this time, we're just requesting the approval of this, this section to be, you know, be approved, so we can get the plat signed, get the plat recorded at the courthouse, and then open those up for sale. The other part of this is how much we're going to charge for those graves. We've run the math on what these improvements have cost the city, and we see no reason to charge more for these than we're currently charging for the, the sections in the back that were opened up most recently, X, Y, and B? W, V, and X. So that, those, those were charged, we were charging $825 for city residents for those, those plots, and $1,650 for non-city residents. So we're recommending to move forward with those same prices for this new section.
Do you hear a motion for the resolution?
I'll move. Pass resolution 2022-11-28-03.
Mr. Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Holland, thank you, ma'am. We are in discussion. Where is the columnarium?
That will go with the committal shelter. When we move forward with the committal shelter, that will be in the back, in the area by the pull-off, in the loop.
And so in each one of these spaces, how many burials can be in each space?
There are 12, 12 burial plots in each lot.
Okay.
That you see here.
Got it.
Other than eight and 21, they only have six.
Wow. Okay. Any further questions? Seeing none. Chair will call a question. All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item 12 is a change order, resolution number 2022-11-28-04, with respect to the Streetscape Fountain. Continue on, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, in your packet, you have a, a change order from Pace Contracting to construct the new fountain area at Wizarder Park. We, we met last, I guess it was really earlier, earlier this year to discuss the fountain and, I mean, requested that Gretchen Smith move forward with the final design and pricing from the contractor. At that time, they, they had a much lower price with their estimate. I think this is just due to the bidding climate and current material costs. I mean, every, we've, we've tried to value engineer this, and every time we value engineer it, the price of things have gone up. So we, it's taken a little longer to get here because we've been trying to figure out ways to save, save costs. So we've kind of come to a point where we need to kind of move forward if we're going to do this. The current price they, they, they gave us is $278,872.45. They've, they've recommended going with concrete pavers instead of granite, and that will save us $15,000. We're recommending to do that as well. So the total change order price would be $263,872, This is the, the fountain that you all previously reviewed and looked at with Gretchen Smith, and the, the paver area around it with some bench seating as well, some neat, you know, bench walls that they would build out of, out of masonry.
So before that corner was really, when, when it was originally designed, the, the idea was try to diminish the cost of that as low as possible in that corner, which is what it was. The existing bowl that is there now was only like $4,800 or something, like somewhere right around that $5,000 number. There was some additional plumbing. That plumbing's, some of that, majority of that plumbing is going to be reused, the water excess, the power supply that's already there. The ring will not be, be damaged, but what we'll do is alter the environment in which that sits. So before, it was limited partly because of cost. If you remember, we were, we trimmed a lot of, of money out of that project in, in several hundred thousand dollars, as a matter of fact. And so this is actually spending the money that was probably originally intended for that corner. And so it provides enhanced seating, enhanced hardscape, and it integrates the fountain into the street more prominently. And then, then so that, if you'll remember, the architect's original vision was that the fountain in the back was for exposure when you're in the park. And the fountain on the corner was designed to be a quiet area where you're around the memorial, the flags. This makes it part of the Streetscape project and brings the Streetscape elements into and around that area so that that flag plaza becomes part of your Streetscape, part of your Streetscape flag plaza. So it actually is, is a bigger footprint than just the, what's in the ring, right? And so certainly, we'll make the plans available if you want to come by and look and, and have access to those. We walked you through the Streetscape as individuals there a couple weeks ago, and you can kind of get a feel for the, the footprint of the pedestrian access that's being added to the project. This is, is commensurate with that same approach as taken all the way through Main Street, where we're really adding space for people on either side of the road. This is adding space for people in that area, including permanent seat walls and things like that. So it is not as simple as just putting a fountain in, in a bowl.
Do you hear a motion for the resolution? Then we can go into further discussion.
Move for approval of resolution 2022-11-28-04.
Mr. Carlisle, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Atkins, thank you. Now we're in more discussion.
So it's, it's definitely more cost-effective during the construction already going on?
Absolutely.
Okay.
If you're ever going to fix that fountain, now is going to be the most cost-effective time.
I don't think anybody has been real pleased with the fountain that's there now.
We've gone back and forth on that, remember, with the original designers. And, and the, the image that was created during that process wasn't, you know, it was just unintentional, I think, but it wasn't consistent with what the product actually could do. And we'll say they took some graphic liberty with the amount of water that could be thrown in the air with that little bowl.
Well put. I do think that it is an extremely visible corner. I realize a lot of money, but it, it, it's going to speak very loudly, particularly if we're able to convert the diagonal corner to something that's going to be, uh, it's going to draw a lot of folks into the downtown. And I think we all would agree, we, we want, we want the community to put its best foot forward to folks that move in. It speaks, and I know it's a bunch of money.
It does complement the downtown master plan if you spend a lot of time with it and the future intention for that, that area.
It's kind of one of those deals that if we don't do it, then, then, you know, you can't, you can't really come back and do it in a long time.
It was diminished during the original project somewhat, if you'll recall.
So as far as, how much did you save on the original project? It was going to be a million?
It was going to be a little bit more than a million. It came in at about six.
Yeah.
Okay, so you saved $400,000. And cut things out, and adding that, this back will still keep it under the original budget.
Yeah, well, that is correct. And, and we, we will take this bowl to the water plant, to, to their little, they have a little green space there. We'll, we had a fountain there traditionally. A lot of you may not remember it. We did have a fountain at the entrance to the water plant forever. It was a bird bath style fountain. This is more consistent with what was there. So we'll find a home for it, for it at the, the entrance to the water plant, probably.
Why don't you, why don't you, what Josh described for is the new proposed water element?
It's a, it's a three-tier fountain. I'm looking at some drawings here. It's about eight feet tall is the, is the actual metal fountain portion. It's, we, you know, we previously looked at, I have some drawings. We could have, maybe next meeting, we can do more visual proposal. We can put something up on the screen that the, the community can look at. But I think, you know, in the, the fountain part of the, of the 260,000 is about half, and the other half is, is the, the hardscape areas around it. And I think that's going to be as, as much of an improvement to it as the fountain itself. The fountain will be great. It will be a huge highlight. But, and it's really, it's really become apparent now as we've, that corner is, is torn up with the project, that it, that, that area doesn't connect to anything. Like you see people climbing over the plantings and walking through the grass. And I think a lot of the hardscape work we're going to do is going to just make it more, more accessible to the park and to the sidewalks. And it's going to feel something that you can just linger around more than, than it is now. So, yeah, let's, I'll, I'll try to, to get some renderings and things to bring to the next meeting so we can all look at.
Yeah, a lot of the, a lot of times when you see those, those metal artistic vertical fountains in the downtown like that, you'll see people sitting around it visiting it and, and just ordering, for lack of a better description. And, and we don't really have that there on the corner. And it would be nice to have visually, as people drive through downtown, people sitting around the corner, something, something there attracting people to. So it will be, it will be complementary to the concepts of the downtown master plan. And also, as we've discussed, that future art walk concept where we have, we're, we're working with arts group, and, and there's different people working on that with us. But the, the idea of just having the memorial plaza at the, at the fire station, you know, you, you want to have more artistic input in, in Wizarder Park. That fountain complements that over time. You want to get the, integrate artwork at center so, so that people have a long walk around downtown as they visit downtown. Things to see, things to walk around. And this, this adds to that potential interaction with people, tourism, people coming to town. So it is an investment, and, and, you know, you're, you're wanting to get a return on the investment. A lot of times, people don't, it's, it's hard to quantify what that return will be. And, but it's, it's kind of like adding enhancements to your home construction. You know, we always go back to, what do you do at your house? You know, you'll, you'll add features when you're building your house that, that make your house a little bit custom, a little bit unique, partly because you want curb appeal, partly because you want that to improve that, that overall performance of that for you if you ever go to resell it, right? Same thing for, for Dambler. As we get tourism here, we want the things we spend our money on to increase the visitors, increase the foot traffic, complementing restaurants like, like the ones that, that we're trying to help sustain themselves through the project. We want to have an environment where folks want to come eat, hang out, and, and visit shops.
And the wall would be additional seating, too?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's a big positive. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call for the question.
Question's been called. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item 13 is the burial discussion for the additional Streetscape utilities. Josh, take it away.
Yes, this, I don't have an official change order tonight. I'll, we'll bring that at a later date because we were approached by the, the, the property owner of the building with Subway about extending the, the burial of utilities further into his property and the city's property behind City Hall. I have a, there's a drawing, there's a sketch in your, in your packet that showed, this is what KU drew up when we, we approached them about this, this project. Currently, we were just burying, we were burying across Fourth Street along that property line, and they were stopping about halfway. There's a couple of, of utility poles there with transformers on them. They were stopping at that point, the, the current project that we were, we were doing. There's a, from that pole, there is a line that runs diagonal across both properties on either side. So we were approached by them, and we've, I've, I've met with the, with both property owners about the project, and they're both, of course, interested in it because it's, it's, it improves the, the, I, the ability to develop those properties in the future. And it also extends, you know, City Hall has overhead utilities that run along our back property line, that have a lot of trees in them, that we, we deal with issues with that. They're in here trimming trees a lot. And I've discussed that with KU because there is a, would appear to be a financial benefit to them as well to get these utilities underground. I've tried to come back with you, to you all with a, with a firm price of what this is going to cost. I've been, been tracking this down for several months now. And I've, I've, the property owners are interested to see what's going on. They're, they're seeing this happen. The contractor is interested in knowing if this is going to happen, so they can plan the project around it. So I, I've come to a point, I just wanted to come to you all to, to gauge interest because there is some additional legwork that we need to do dealing with the other private property owners that'll be fed by these utilities, to, to work out some issues before I can have a, a firm price. From, from the prices I've gotten so far, I, I think this is going to cost about $150,000 additionally to the project. So I, I think we can recoup some, some of that from KU, but what I've heard from them is they cannot, they can't determine that until we approve the project, which I think is interesting. They can't, they can't tell us what they can contribute to the project until we say we're going to pay for it all. So I, I, I think, I think some of that is budget years as well. This obviously is not going to happen in this calendar year. It's going to be next year, and they don't, they need to get into next year's budget before they can know how much money they have for projects like this. So there's, there's a lot of things that I need to figure out to, to come up with the final price. But in the meantime, I just wanted to gauge interest of the commission to see if this is something that you all would be interested in. Because it is, is a big expense, but it's also, we, like we've talked about tonight with the downtown master plan and everything we're doing downtown, the money we're spending, it, it improves the future outlook of your downtown redevelopment. And it improves City Hall in a way as well. So as you can see, there, those, that's the end of the line. What you see there, there's an overhead line that runs behind City Hall, and at the end of it, that's the end. So if we can get that buried, that kind of cleans up this whole area behind us. So it, there's, there's obvious benefits to the project, but it's, it is a high-dollar amount. But as we've seen, it, it keeps going up all the time. That's, you know, there's been these, even the few months I've had to chase this down, they've come back and changed their price and raised it, the different utilities have, what this will cost. So that's one of those things that eventually, one day, probably gets done, whether it be at the city or through a redevelopment project. And is it done now at the current price, or is it done in the future? It's kind of the question we're asking.
So a couple of points. If you do this now, if you pursue this now, you're really pursuing and, and increasing the likelihood that you're going to get redevelopment of some of those properties just because you clean up the utilities that are on the property. And so you're, you're potentially impacting some of the, some of the thought processes for what they do with their properties that, that you're, you're crossing. So that's a good thing. That will be in your favor ultimately in terms of what the city's concerns are. In addition to that, it pushes the utilities, as you'll recall, that access road on the east side of City Hall is actually right-of-way. And so it, it more correctly lines utilities with property lines and on the right-of-way. And, and so it's just something to think about. Right now, the, the utilities are all overhead and go in, in different directions diagonally across the various properties. And so what we'd like for you to do is to consider whether or not you want to do it. And that gives Josh a little bit of direction. And then meanwhile, while he comes back with detailed pricing, then what, what I'd like for you to do is schedule a time to, to walk over there and kind of get your head around whether or not it's something that you think makes sense for, for the public at large. And I, I think that would be reasonable for you to do that. And certainly, we'll make ourselves available to take time, as much time as you need, to walk over there and, and point and, and show you kind of what, what's really part of the scope and, and why.
Do you hear a motion for the, well, we don't need a motion for that, do we? So move right along to item...
We can encourage them to continue the investigation if what they want to hear from us, right?
That's really what we were wanting, wanting to know.
We all in agreement on that?
Yeah, I'd like to see what it will do.
Move on. Item 14 is the first reading of ordinance number 2005. This is with respect to a food truck ordinance. Ms. Lester, good evening.
Yes, you have a for you ordinance. We actually started working on this pre-COVID. I think COVID kind of came in. But this is, this is an ordinance that will formalize a process and give us guidelines for food trucks, especially ones that are on public property. Most, there are some rules in Planning and Zonings Ordinance that addresses them when they're on private property. It requires them to get a temporary zoning permit and so on. But we don't have anything that addresses what we do with them on public property. So we've kind of not known what to do with those at different times. It would set up and address things such as, you know, noise, lighting, trash, where they can be in relation to brick and mortar businesses of like, like kind. It addresses public safety, our special events, what kind of insurance they have to cover us liability-wise because they're using our public streets. And I'll be happy to go through all of that if you want me to go through each one of those. But I'll be happy to also answer any questions you might have.
I guess, um, did you consult with, I know you checked, probably checked other ordinances from other towns. Did you check any, talk to any of the food vendors, the truck people here? I just...
Jeff Jewels worked with the retail establishments. But as far as with the chamber, he had a group of people working with that. But as far as actually talking to the food truck people, no.
Okay.
This was kind of the start of that process of getting community input and your input. But we do need some sort of process to address the issues that we deal with as far as codes goes and public safety. Making sure that people have the correct things for the propane that they have in there, that they're not hooking into public utilities, where they can park and can they store their vehicles overnight, things like that.
Yeah, so it takes an industry that has increased in its demand and it's put a little bit of structure to it consistent with things that we identified in other cities, such as treating them basically like they get a once-a-year occupational license, paying net profits at the end of the year. That guarantees our inspections, it guarantees and pays, compensates the city properly for fire inspection, for example, then sewer inspection, for example, if that comes into play with plumbing and, you know, just basically adds structure to it. But again, that structure is very consistent with other cities that we looked at. We did sit down with a group of many different people over time. We had CVB involved, we've had.
The chamber, the planning and zoning, the health department.
Yeah, we tried to cover communication with as many people as possible in that. We really didn't have an ordinance before. It was basically if you have property, you can come in and get a permit to, if it's commercial property, if it fits that property zoning, it was more of just strictly a zoning permit, which didn't cover us in terms of fire protection. Or, you know, some of them have onsite tanks, some of them have generators, onsite generators, tanks of fuel, for example, for their generators. And so this adds structure to all of that, all those loose ends contained with one of those entities want desires to establish temporarily in town. And then it gives them an understanding of what their annual costs are too, here.
And what our requirements are and what they can and cannot do as far as our, like I said, it's more of a formalized guideline for them and lets them know ahead of time what they, what's expected of them. Not unlike what we do with the fireworks permit for any other vendors coming in to get that. We do that with pawn brokers and different entities that we've seen a reason to formalize a process for.
That's the one that I was thinking about, and I think, you know, we need to do this, of course, but in both those instances, it seems like they had unintended consequences. We kind of had to go back and massage a little bit. And that was because, in my opinion, because we didn't talk to the people who did it, and they might have kept us out of some of those situations, but I guess either way, it'll.
It's not unlike other ordinances we do, you know, sometimes we have to do the rules and then sometimes, yes, you do have to tweak them based on what goes on. And there's just no way to know for sure everything. But we have compared this with other cities' ordinances that are looking at these same issues, and lots of those have already passed ordinances of some type to deal with food trucks coming in.
Yeah, I know this has been worked on a long time. When I first started, I met with Jeff and he had, was meeting with the vendors, so, and I guess just listen to them if they come back and say, hey, something's not working or, you know, let us know.
Are you ready for a motion, first reading?
Yes, sir, I am.
I move for passage of first reading of ordinance 2005.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Further discussion?
Call for the question.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Mayor, we need to read in the record, have a roll call.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 2005, an ordinance amending City of Danville, Kentucky Code of Ordinance Chapter 13, Mobile Food Sales, creating rules and regulations pertaining to the operation of food trucks in the city of Danville. Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
And we don't need an executive session.
I'm going to roll along.
Personnel for just a minute.
Do we have need for an executive session?
Personnel won't take long.
Okay. Do we hear a motion that we?
I move we go into executive session to discuss personnel matter pursuant to KRS 61801F.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Second by Commissioner Holland. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Mr. Atkins, I didn't hear your voice, your vote, sir.
He's rebelling.
He's abstaining.
We will wish you all a good night as we retire to executive session.